I'd like to call the November study session to order. Men and clerks, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Lachka? Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes, here, and if anybody didn't hear Carl, he's here too.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Placheck?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
Seven present.
Motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion in support. Any additions, corrections? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. It's the first opportunity for public comment. Please step forward and identify yourself by name if you have anything. Seeing no public comment, Administrator Overton, your study session.
What's that? Yeah. First up, we have a presentation by Tammy Bates from District Court.
I want to start today with a couple of things. First is, we are here, District Court is here, to ask for your permission or your approval to move forward with a reorganization plan that we've put a lot of time and effort into, a lot of thought into. And if you can recall, we have not been to this body for something of this nature ever. I've been the court administrator since 2008, and during that time, the county has faced several budget issues across the board. We've had to have FTE cuts throughout, and District Court has continually done what was expected. We've been responsive to the county's needs, and, you know, we have never come in under -- or, excuse me, over our expense budget. We've always come in line with what we've projected, and historically, we've always come in above revenue of what we projected we would bring in. So, I guess what I want you to do first off is think we're not here to continually ask for more and more and more. We're here for the first time asking for your strong consideration of this because we think that it's something that's going to move us forward with better customer service to the community. It's going to provide a lot of things, not only better customer service, but it's going to help our employees as well. So, with that, historically, District Court has been seen as the people's court. And the reason that we're known as the people's court is because we are the court that the majority of the community has the most contact with. According to a report that was published by the State Court Administrative Office, the District Court did 53,307 filings in 2013, as opposed to Circuit and Family Court at 5,275 and probate at 1,691. I put a pie chart there for you, just kind of for fun. So consequently with that, the perception of the judicial system in Jackson County is influenced primarily by the District Court. We want that to be a good perception. We want that to be a good thing. We want people that come to the court to have a good experience because that is the lasting impression that they're going to have of the judicial system. What we want to do is, we've talked about for years, for those of you commissioners that have been around long enough to hear this spiel, we've talked about the ideal situation for a court system is to have a justice center. And with this justice center, everything would be located in one area, thus making it one-stop shopping, makes it easier for staffing, all of those things. We even went so far back in, I think it was 2003, establishing a justice center fund. With that in mind, that it was going to be a savings account so that later on down the road, if we ever got to that point, here was going to be some startup money to put together a justice system -- or a justice center. That hasn't happened. We recognize that budgets have kind of turned. That money was given to the county, if you will, from that fund, and we quit utilizing the fund. We used that to help the county with some capital things that they needed. So ideally, that is the ideal situation. But if we can't have the ideal situation, what I want to do is try to get second best. Right now, our court, District Court, is spread out. We have a traffic division and a civil division that are downstairs on the first floor. In those divisions, we house deputy clerks. On the second floor, we have the criminal division, housing again deputy clerks. I want to consolidate and have all of our deputy clerks in one area, similar to the county clerk. If you're all in one area, it's easier to get the work done as opposed to being spread out amongst two different floors. So part one of the plan is to consolidate three departments into one. This gives us the ability to provide optimum service levels. We want to move the criminal department downstairs to the first floor with the civil and traffic. Move collections that is currently downstairs, move them upstairs. So on the second floor where the courtrooms are, we will have probation and collections. Those are the ones that really are in the courtrooms more than anyone. The deputy clerks really, if they go to the courtrooms, it's not to actually present cases, go before the judge, they're there to work. So our probation and collections would be on the second floor, thus making it easier for the judges to communicate with them and them communicate with the judges. This also is going to put us in a better position for future cuts, and in case we have cases that decline, and maybe caseloads are going to decline, maybe county's going to experience additional budget difficulties. This is going to put us in a better situation. If they're all in one area, we can do cross-training. Right now, we do do cross-training, however, it's been at a minimum because we don't have the staffing levels. We've lost throughout since 2006, eight positions. So with eight positions since 2006, our departments are at their bare minimum. We can't take someone off of their job to go, say, per se, to the civil department to learn the civil because there's nobody there to help out and do their job. If we're all in one area, the cross-training is going to be much, much better. Right now, I have a civil docket clerk that handles the judge's dockets, and I have a criminal docket clerk. Well, if they're all in one area, we can have one that takes care of one judge as opposed to two. So this is being proactive. It's putting us in a better position down the road if we have problems. Right sizing has always been a challenge, and I know that you all have faced this. HPO has been the philosophy here for, since Adam came, and one of these committees from leadership is LIFT. LIFT is where we send our employees and listen to what they are telling us are the problems. Well, in a September LIFT meeting, these employees identified some problems. The leadership team took those problems and created a problem statement and a goal statement. The problem statement was county employees have expressed frustration and difficulty in providing optimum service levels. Yeah, that's true. They're having a hard time providing those optimum service levels because as a result of downsizing, we are at bare minimum. So we can't. It's difficult to do that. If we consolidate, this is going to increase for us in the District Court. We are going to increase that optimum service level. We are going to be able to do that exact thing. The goal statement is engage and empower county employees with the, will be able to provide consistent optimal service levels within a changing environment. How do you do that? How do you engage and empower county employees? Well, I think my county employees are engaged and are empowered, and I want to keep it that way. I want them to be loyal. I want them to know that the county of Jackson is behind them, that they recognize that we have downsized, we have put more on them and asked more of them, and I want them to know that. I want them to be rewarded. I want them to see so that they stay loyal and stay here. Has anybody looked at the county job postings lately? Yeah, I've been here for 25 years, and I've never, ever seen it as high as it is right now. People are leaving because they can get, in some instances, better pay and better benefits. I don't want to lose my employees for that. I don't want to lose them. So that's part one. Part one of the organizational reorg plan is to consolidate. Part two is, in order to consolidate, if we're going to consolidate, right now I have three departments, thus I need three managers. If we consolidate down to two, I don't need three managers. We have, as of recently, October of this year, Rick Bradley, our chief enforcement officer, indicated that he was going to retire. Also in November, the 11th, we're losing another one of our deputy clerks, actually case work coordinator, Vicki Hines. Those two positions, if I were to eliminate those two positions in wages and benefits, I would save $157,009.14. Now, keep in mind, that's out of the 2015 budget that's already been approved, personnel line item that's already been approved. By doing that, with that savings, what I want to do is upgrade my employees. The RISE study was done in 1997, and I know that we're talking about doing another wage study, and we've talked about a wage study. However, I don't think that we're in a position right now to say that that wage study is in place and is going to take effect in 2015. We haven't started it. We started looking for someone to do it, which is awesome. But I believe that when the wage study is done, it's going to be 2016, 2017, before our employees are even going to see the benefit of that. I can tell you that my employees, from 1997 to now, their job has changed. Their job has changed immensely. Yes, the workload has increased, however, they're working outside of their job descriptions. They're doing things that they didn't do in 1997. They're cross-training. They're working in other departments to get the job done. They're working in classifications higher than what they're aligned to do to get the job done, to do what is best for the overall good of the county. They understand, and I've had conversations with them over and over and over, this is what we have to do. This is what we have to do for the good of the order. Not only have they had to pick up extra, I've cut my administrative staff throughout these eight cuts. I have three non-union positions right now that in 2013, we came to the upgrade committee and asked for permission to upgrade these three positions. They did their study, they did their research, and the committee came back and said, yes, we approve it, they need to have this increase. However, you don't have personnel costs to pay for it. So what do I do? I go back to my three administrators, my managers, and say, yep, they say you deserve to have the money, but, or the increase, but there's no personnel cost to cover it. So what does my staff do? That's okay. We'll keep doing what we're doing until such time as we can be compensated. Team players. This is a list, and I believe that you have this list, so I don't want to go through it completely, but this is the list of the changes that would need to be made with the upgrades. If you look at the savings, this is the already 2015 approved personnel costs. You have Rick Bradley with wages and benefits, Vicki Hines, wages and benefits. Your total is $157,000, as I mentioned. The cost of the upgrade, the total cost of the upgrades for these employees is $112,804. That leaves a savings in my personnel line item that's already been approved of $45,111. Now, just for fun, I said let's multiply that by five. If in the next five years, we continue to save that, if we go with this plan, that's the savings over the course of the next five years. It puts us at $225,555. Due diligence. District Court, I believe, has done our due diligence to assist the county and be responsive to the county's needs in the last several years during the budget difficulties. We've increased fines and costs several times. We've implemented a 20% late fee. The Justice Center Fund revenue transfer, traffic and collections consolidation, we did that four years ago, three or four years ago, just to eliminate an FTE. Employees doing more with less, loyal employees. We've had eight cuts since 2006. If we calculated the savings, if they were still employed to this day, it would be $1.6 At one time, we needed a vehicle for our warrant officer. There wasn't capital money for that. District Court paid for a vehicle out of our rainy day fund. We paid for the match for e-ticketing out of our rainy day fund so that e-ticketing would move forward with the county. Because we were at a standstill, there were townships, local township, law enforcement that couldn't get the match, couldn't do it. District Court did it out of our rainy day fund so that it would move forward. We bought a fingerprint machine for a department. Money wasn't there. District Court did it for another department that didn't benefit District Court out of our rainy day fund. Future efficiencies, this is going to improve customer service, a one-stop shop. We're going to cross-train our employees. It's better participation in sponsored events. And what I mean by that is, right now, it's tough for our employees to go to LIFT meetings. It's tough for our employees to go to county-sponsored events because there's nobody there to do their job when they're gone. We're at bare minimum. We consolidate. I think we're going to be in a better position to attend some of these things. It's going to give us a better situation in the future. You know, the Supreme Court has been on us for concurrent jurisdiction to consolidate. If that happens with all of us being in one area, it's going to put us in a better position for that. We want to be proactive and not reactive. So the financing for this, really, there isn't any. The funds are already approved in 2015. The remodeling cost is really all that's there. I'm not sure if there's any money left in the courthouse improvement fund. That was an idea. And there is the balance of the savings in the personnel line item, which would be a one-time use for the remodeling. We want to make it very, very clear that there are no additional fees here. This is money that's already approved. All I want to do is reallocate it. I want to reallocate it to these employees that have been working outside of their job descriptions for the last five, six years. I want to do this to show them and retain them. I don't want to lose any more employees. Finally, we want to thank you for this opportunity, the District Court, with the full support of my bench. I know that Judge Mazur didn't make it. I'm guessing he probably forgot. But this is the one time that I can tell you that all four of my judges have been in full support and on the same page on something, okay? It's not that often that you get all four that are on the same page and are fully in support. And I can stand here and say that I have all four judges' support in this plan. We look forward to cooperatively continuing to work cooperatively with the county and support the board's mission. And again, I just ask that you strongly consider this, and that's what I have.
Thank you, Tammy. The expectation today was to make a presentation, have some discussion, and come back in December with perhaps answers to questions we may not have currently, and hopefully move towards some sort of decision in December. So with that, I'd open it up to questions, please.
Thank you, Tammy. Obviously, there's a lot of questions, but I'd like to start out with the Center for Justice Funds. When we voted on that, and most commissioners recommended that when that fund was transferred, that fund would be used for improvements at the courthouse. So my question right now, when you look at the improvements that are, they're not specifically laid out, but how much money do we have in that fund right now in regards to potentially remodeling? Adam, Mike, you have an idea?
I believe there's a little less than $800,000.
It's left in there?
Yeah, I think there's approximately $770,000, somewhere between that ballpark. Yes, there is.
Yeah, that money is spent in the five-year plan. It has been since last year. Saying we have the cash, but it's all allocated out over the next five years.
Right.
So we'd have to reallocate if we were to...
And it's all spent on items in the courthouse.
Agreed. That I'm aware, yes. Okay, well, that's something to consider, for sure.
Not a question, just a statement. I think this looks like a very well-thought-out plan. The fact you have all four benches approving, and looking at it, it looks, wow, good work, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I wanted to echo the same messages, Tammy. I've had the pleasure of working with you since 2006 and onward, even back when Mike was there, and your department has always stepped up to the plate and been there with innovative ideas, and this is another one. This is kind of the idea that I really like to see, where we reduce but empower our employees with pay and also some education and tools so that way they can do their job better and cross-train for greater participation. It really makes sense.
Thank you.
I agree with the previous comments, and when I reviewed the packet, I noted the signature of all the judges on the back page, which was a good thing, and don't always see that. Not necessarily specific to the court, but the comment of Tammy's about a large turnover of employees, I happen to see that board downstairs with all the postings on it all the time. Is that indicative of other departments in the county as well, as much as the courts or not? I'm curious.
We have, well, first of all, a lot of what you see is people moving around within the county. So it can be a little deceiving, all those papers, but obviously each one of those started with someone leaving the county, and then there's, you know, people moving around inside. But yeah, we've had challenges, particularly with mechanics and other positions in the county.
Okay, well, again, very thorough plan. I appreciate the thoroughness of it.
Thank you.
Okay, Tammy, I'm back. I agree, your presentation, very strong presentation, thank you. And the contents of this are very thorough. So I agree with my fellow commissioners. My question is, and maybe it's for Commissioner Alexander because, you know, math does make a difference, just help me out here. On your upgrades, on your upgrades, you've got 11 upgrades overall. How does that equal out to the $157,0914?
What we did was, we took the 2015 wages and took each employee from where they are now, and if they were to bump up a pay grade, what the pay would be, and then came up with the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, anyone? If not, we look forward to seeing you back in December.
December, so to personnel finance, is that where I go next?
Yeah, I believe that would be correct.
Okay, all right.
Unless there's a call for or need for more discussion, we could have a back-up study, but we'll see.
Okay.
Tammy, how long would it take to implement this new structure?
Well, we could implement, I mean, I'm already down two employees. I've been working without those two employees for, one since the end of October, not very long, and the other Vicki actually left in September. But it wouldn't take long to get the process rolling. I think the thing that's going to take the most time is the remodel. So, I mean, I can't answer to the construction of that, but we would start moving forward with moving people. They would be in temporary offices and things of that nature until we could get the remodeling done where we need it. So, I mean, we could start immediately.
Your people are ready to go?
My people are ready to go, and, yeah, they're ready to go.
Okay.
I mean, they're every day asking me, and, you know, I feel kind of bad for them because the last month, it's been, what are we doing? Are we replacing these positions? How come you haven't posted them? So I've been getting a little bit of kickback from my staff because I didn't want to tell them about this. I didn't want to, I didn't want to tell them this plan. I didn't want to get them excited about something that may not happen. I didn't want to get their hopes up. But then when I found out that I was coming to study session this morning, I decided I needed to tell my employees so that they didn't hear about it through someone else. So Wednesday, last Wednesday, I actually sat down with them and explained the plan, and they're ready to go. They're ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know when we, what the remodel cost might be?
I don't.
Or can we get those? Okay.
It won't be much. It, well, it's moving furniture. We have the collections that are, they have workstations now, and we're going to move those up. I'm probably going to have to put in another window downstairs where our collections waiting room is right now. The idea is to put a window in there, so it's another service window, try to get handicap accessible service window. And then, right now, I don't know if you've been to the courthouse, but what we have is the civil department sits here, and there's a door that goes through. There's the collection waiting room, and then there's a door into traffic and collections. We want to take those doorways out so that it's one big office, so that they'll all be in one big area. So I don't think, I mean, structurally, it's all there. It might just be taking down a wall or a couple of doors and then workstations that are already there. We just need to move upstairs.
If there's no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Give you glasses.
I would be a mess without those.
Next up, we're going to speak about Leonie. This, I thought, well, for the benefit of at least one new commissioner, and anybody in the audience, and of course, review for the board, existing board, I'd go over some of the history here so that everyone sees how we led up to where we are today with that. With that, and then, of course, you know, we'll discuss and so forth. With the expectation that this would lead to a decision by this body, if not this month, next month, for sure, and we have that kind of time. Back in 2004 is when the Southern Regional Interceptor, otherwise known as, you know, the SRI bond contract, was developed and adopted in December of that year. Initially, the first few years, '07, '08, there was no principal due on that bond, interest only. Since that time, interest is, or, excuse me, principal has been paid, and it's graduated, meaning it's continually going up. Started at $125,000, principal's due in July. And of course, the most recent payment was $225,000, and the payment in '15 and '16 will be $250,000. And it maxes out in another 10 years at $425,000. So you can see, it just continues, goes up. The Southern Regional Interceptor, the need and the logic behind installing it, developing it, installing it, was the anticipated growth in the southern part of the county down there, around the lakes and so forth, where there's a lot more, obviously, there's septics, and while septics are, they work well, when they don't work well, they very much cause environmental problems, especially for the lake and so forth. So clearly, good intent to remedy a future problem in a timely manner, with the expectation that that growth would pay for this bond. Needless to say, everyone knows what happened to that growth. Housing market dropped, and of course, there was no new houses, no... Housing market dropped, and, of course, there was no new houses, no new hookups, and therefore they started having challenges paying the debt. That's Leonie's version, it's really everybody's version, but it's more particular to Leonie, since they were the ones, per the bond contract, obligated to pay the debt to the county. They make a payment twice a year to the county, and we go ahead and forward those funds. We're pass-through on that. Our responsibility and role in the whole bond contract is one of oversight, one of, if there's a problem, stepping in and making sure that the bond is paid. Not necessarily in managing the operations, ongoing maintenance, and repairs of the system, by any means. The bond contract, while, while everyone, when I say everyone, all four townships involved signed it, we presume they signed it with advice of counsel, we presume they did it at a public meeting with much discussion. Important part is that they signed it. The challenge in the contract is, and I'm no attorney, but I've read through it more than once, highlighted it significantly, and I can understand why, at least from a layperson's point of view, it'd be difficult. You can read different sections and easily take it out of context and have confusion as to who should be paying what, let's put it that way. In my mind, it could have been made more clear, perhaps, maybe it's just me, it needs to be more layman terms for me, perhaps. Be that as it may, as Leonie began to have difficulty paying the bond, their words, because the payment, the growth wasn't there, they felt the need to make requests, and felt they had the authority to do it, per the bond contract, of the other three townships, who, in all honesty, the material flowing through those pipes comes from those townships. It's where the, that's where the pipe goes, and goes to the sewer system. So, from a layperson's standpoint, I get that. It's like, okay, who's benefiting from the pipe, therefore, okay, yeah, they should pay for it, as a user fee. Part of the challenges with the three townships, again, these are all, this is all my interpretation of what I've read and heard over the last more than a year now, is that they believe they pay a significant amount to Leonie for services for the Southern Regional Interceptor, and as well as for the maintenance and operation of the wastewater treatment plant. And that's, I'm sure that's true, they do. They feel that while it's true, the economy, the housing market and growth did not materialize, they feel that Leonie could, could and have been making the payment all this time without additional dollars, and therefore should continue to do so. They feel that the only reason Leonie now has to come to them and ask for more dollars is because, well, I'll be frank, it's been said, they believe that Leonie could do a better job in managing the operation, therefore reducing the expense, and thus have more money of the existing dollars they have to apply towards the debt. That's arguable. They've been trying to have, create an authority amongst the, what is it, 10 communities over there, and they have an authority in name, I'll say, a group of township supervisors and village folks that get together and try to work out problems and issues. They really don't have any real power over the facility or the operation. That group, some years ago, meaning 2010, was also arguing that, you know, hey, we're not sure what about the math here, we'd like to see an audit. And to everyone's credit, they brought in Markowski and company, and they performed an audit, and I've read that, and the audit basically said that, now, things are okay, they're paying the bills, the money's being accounted for, it wasn't a smoking gun or anything that suggested that, you know, something untoward had been done, and that things needed to change. So it goes by its side. But yet, the problem only grew as the shortfall of cash to pay the bond debt grew. It got to the point where Leonie felt the need to engage in litigation, and thus, a lawsuit was born involving all four townships. The county was not named in that lawsuit. Ultimately, Judge Laflamme, which I have his verdict, or his opinion, or his findings, or his ruling, right in front of me. I've read this a few times as well, and it's very thorough, I think he did a nice job of summarizing the agreement, and perhaps some of its shortfalls, as you, as most of you, I know, are aware. He did find that the county should have been a part of that, given that the county ultimately has the authority to make a determination about the funding, meaning, we, this body would decide, if you were to decide that Leonie does not have the resources to pay the bond, you could impose a fee, or frankly, a tax, on one township or all of the townships. That's why the judge felt that we should have been a party to the litigation. I think, as I indicated earlier, that the average guy on the street, if you talk to the average guy, he's going to say, well, who uses a sewer? Who's got material in there, and so forth and so on? I think the average person would say that those three townships are the bulk of that user, and therefore should be paying more, if that's what's necessary. The judge does say that Leonie is, has pledged their full faith and credit, as well as their general fund, or whatever it takes, basically, in the bond contract, to pay for this bond. The judge has also said that the contract says that, while that's true, it's also clear that these townships should be paying their share, if you will, of the usage. Ultimately, this ruling really didn't solve the problem, because the judge also said, but Leonie, you don't have the authority to force a fee increase or a tax on these other townships, only the county has that authority. So thus, that's why we're here today. Now, we worked with, we've worked with, particularly myself and the township commissioner, worked with all four townships considerably over the last year, lots of back-and-forth discussions, negotiations, you know, drama, on trying to work out this difference of opinion, and which is, you know, we give you plenty of money, no, you do not, we need more, if you did a better job, you know, you wouldn't need more, that kind of thing. Ultimately, it really came down to the wire in June, when we had a, not only an interest payment, but a principal payment due. Ultimately, they split it, Leonie paid half, and the other three townships paid half. I don't think anybody was happy, but I was happy that the bond got paid. From the county's perspective, and to be frank about that, my expectation is to get the bond paid. Not necessarily to solve their dispute. Well, that'd be great, and I think that's what really needs to happen for a lasting, long-term relationship to prosper and move forward. At the end of the day, I still need the bond payment, that's what's critical, from the county's perspective. But I would also add that, while we have the means to generate the dollars forcibly from these townships, we, or they, or all of us, it creates a significant, while difficult to measure, but a significant in my mind, as well as the minds of our folks doing economic development in our county, problem for us when we're trying to move forward with growth and industry. I've been told by the EG that a number of individuals looking to relocate have some serious concerns about that whole, what they read in the paper, what they hear from their site selection people, in regard to this dispute. Because, you know, industry businesses expect, they like consistency, they like known quantities. And right now, this clearly is up in the air, we're not sure where it's going to go. So that is definitely causing a problem, and frankly, it is all the more reason the county needs to try to resolve the matter for the long term, if we can. So we got the bond paid in June, and from that point, we said, okay, we've got another six months, let's work on, what do we need to do to resolve this? Well, they had an audit some years ago, financial audit, typical audit, and things appear to be fine. So really, if that's the case, if it's not necessarily that funds have been absconded with, or anything crazy like that, what is holding us back? So I asked the townships, I asked the county commissioners and so forth to provide questions. What questions do you have, or you believe need to be answered, to move this forward? Well, since the problem, if you will, resides with the three townships that are using it, and have said that they're not going to give Leonie additional dollars, because they don't necessarily believe they need to, or that Leonie has the need, it became apparent that just a straight financial audit would not necessarily solve the problem. Because really what we're talking about here, what they're talking about, and what the questions reflect, the bulk of, is more operational stuff. How are they running the facility? Are they, you know, do they have, you know, waste, and that sort of thing? Are they running as efficiently as they should? So, you know, with that end, I sent to, well, anyways, I gathered all the questions up, kind of consolidated them down, meaning tried to remove duplication, make them a little more clear, if you will, for the auditor, and we had selected Plant Moran for a number of reasons. One, they're one of the largest in the state, one of the largest in the country, frankly, very well-respected. Now, size, the reason that has a bearing on it is, we want them to do this right away. So they have to have depth of organization, enough staff that they can pull from various places and put it on a project at once. Otherwise, we just get in the queue of a smaller firm, and it may be months before they can get to us, because we are something beyond their normal routine expectation. And additionally, smaller firms do not necessarily have a consultation branch, or division, or focus, they focus on financial audits, not necessarily operational reviews. And Plant Moran has a long history of that level of expertise and competence. Now, granted, they are not the least expensive around, but again, we're looking for solid report that everyone can say, you know what, this was professionally done, we have no doubt about the outcome of what the report says, the facts, and that it's something we can move forward with. So, I sent them in August 14th, I sent Plant Moran more or less the scope of work with the questions that we were looking for. A month later, in September 17th, I get a response back from Plant Moran with the scope of work and a contract and everything, and they're ready, you know, pretty much ready to go. That we shared with the townships. My first conversation was with township supervisor of Leonie, and he and I had a nice conversation, shared it with him, he read through it, we discussed, and at that time, he's like, oh, you know, that's, that's not inexpensive, but, but he believed it was money well-spent, and he also believed that the questions were appropriate in the sense that, and I say appropriate in the sense of the general overall, because he recognizes that it's more of an operational thing, not necessarily a dollar, a financial auditing kind of thing. He also indicated that, while it's $240 an hour, since they have the scope of work, meaning Leonie, they know the questions that will be asked, they could pull a lot of those files, so they're not spending that kind of money for people to search for files and things like that, so they could, you know, do some pre-audit work to move this thing forward that much quicker. So I thought all was well. Unfortunately, and frankly, I thought all was well, because there was a number of, I think most of you've seen, articles in the paper, where the township supervisor in Leonie said it was okay, you know, made some comments to the positive of moving forward with Plant Moran. Unfortunately, early October, October 6th, I received a letter by hand from the township supervisor, and I read it, and he and I talked about it. Basically, the township, and it's clearly prepared by their attorney, and that's, you know, to be expected. But basically, it said that they thought our questions were too general, and were not focused on financial audit, they were, you know, not really answering the question of, do they have enough money to make the bond payment? At that time, I said to Todd, I said, well, Todd, if you don't feel the questions are appropriate, you and your board, presumably, which I'm pretty sure this was adopted at a board meeting, you know, so, at any rate, I said, well, if these questions that we proposed aren't appropriate in your mind to move us forward with this, what questions do you propose that we try to answer, that you believe that would move us forward? If ours aren't what you need, what do you think is the problem? Because we think these questions will help us solve the problem for an everlasting peace, at least till the next issue. And he said, you know, that's a fair question, and I'll get back to you. Well, you know, two weeks go by, and I haven't heard anything. Three weeks, and now I'm like, okay, I'm going to have to speak to, you know, prompt them more so. I talked to Michelle Manke, is she the clerk or treasurer? Clerk, thank you, I forgot. And she's like, you know, Mike, Todd hasn't mentioned that to us. And I'm like, okay, I'll tell you what, I will send you an email restating that, my questions, and, you know, that we're still looking for, to move forward here, what questions do you believe? So, towards that end, it was actually October 27th, I sent an email to Todd, and I copied Michelle Manke, the clerk, with the idea that she would, and I put on there CC copy, Township Trustees, so that make sure they, the clerk would provide all of them a copy of my email. But, and I'll just read it just kind of short here. So, as last we spoke about the attached letter, meaning their letter that Todd delivered to me, you indicated that you would put together questions that you thought appropriate, and that would provide the information necessary to move this issue forward. I've yet to receive the questions or any additional contact regarding the matter. As you have indicated on more than one occasion, Leonie has been audited, and no problems were found. So assuming you're not proposing a financial audit questions, what are you proposing? And, that was sent into last month. Now, and frankly, I would, that still stands, I'd still like to hear what Leonie believes are the questions that need to be answered to help move this forward. Now, with the idea that we have a bond payment coming up, January 1st, for 77,000 and some change, it's an interest-only payment. With that in mind, and given our experience in the spring, we've taken steps to expedite the process, if you will. So in September, at the Board of Public Works, I asked for them to approve the resolution ahead of time that would put in... ahead of time that would put Leoni on notice of default if they choose not to pay the interest payment. That interest payment is due to the county December 1st. It's due to the bondholders January 1st. And this, this resolution is the same one you've seen before, because I just changed the dates and the amounts that our attorney had drafted prior to. I didn't feel the need to engage the attorney to write a whole new resolution, why spend those dollars? And it's the same thing. And it applies. Now, what this resolution basically says is that if you don't pay us December 1st, one, you're in default, two, I will send a copy of that resolution not only to the county treasurer, but to the state treasurer. Putting the state on notice that we would seek to collect revenue sharing, state revenue sharing of Leonis. That amount would be 25% of the payment that's due. So $77,000, 25% of that is what the state can hold per the act, for the law, Act 185, and forward to this county. Now granted, that's only 25% of the bond payment. 75% is still on the county's shoulders to pay. That amount would have to come from, or I should say, the means to collect it is either a fee on the users or an ad valorem tax. It's not subject to headly proposal A or anything else, that act exempts all that. The bond contract is very clear, as is the act, that this body can decide to whom they're going to send the bill. So we can send it to Leoni, we can send it to all the townships, whatever the mix needs to be. Now, I believe that, and I, I believe I've been consistent about this, that, you know, clearly there is folks using the pipe and therefore should be paying some portion thereof. I mean, that's, that's a general expectation, I think. And the judge has more or less said as much, and the contract says that as well. But at the same time, also recognize that the contract says that Leoni is the one who shoulders, had took on the responsibility, therefore shoulders by their general obligation all the debt. So I guess, you know, it obviously comes down to what the county commissioners here feels appropriate, and obviously, there's going to be much discussion and more facts and materials and so forth brought forward. But I must say, I'm disappointed that Leoni has backed out of the deal that I thought that we were going to look and at least make that effort to discern what was the problem that's holding up resolution. So I'm not inclined at this time to recommend to this body that they pass that additional 75% of the $77,000 interest payment onto the other three townships. I'd probably feel differently if Leoni had done it and were playing what I considered move, trying to move this forward, but at this time, I don't see that they're trying to move it forward. I think they're basically saying, county, you decide and do it based on the information you have. And of course, while yes, we can do an audit and so forth, you know, it's their facility, we can't just go in and, you know, with troops and take over and say, show us your books and that sort of thing. They need to be a part of that, and thus far, they have, reluctant at this point, we'll say the least. With that, I'll open up the questions, concerns, or otherwise.
I made a small list, I guess I'll just go with one or two of them for now, but if Leoni has defaulted on their payment, which they've already done in the, in the prior one, correct? We made it on time, but they did not meet their deadline of making it to us, so they've defaulted, correct?
Well, they initially defaulted, but they made the payment before we had to make a payment.
Right, but they defaulted on their obligation to pay us, correct? Which triggers our right to have an audit, correct?
Well, we can actually have an audit without that.
Okay, well, that's the next question. Why are we not just moving forward with that? I recognize that they're not willing to cooperate now, although there were letters to the contrary that they welcomed it, but why would we not just move forward with that? And if we have to go to court to get access to what we need, do that.
Well, and, and I've considered that, and I think that's really, the word court is really where it's at. We would end up in court, spending, you know, dollars on all sides, when the reality is, from my perspective, I'm interested in getting the bond payment. It'd be great to solve all this problem with these townships, but I'm interested in the bond payment. We can achieve that without us spending any additional tax dollars on lawsuits.
But as I understand it, Leoni has the obligation to make the payment to us, and I think that's where it should be. Now, if Leoni wants to go back on the townships to get it from them, I think that's their obligation to do that, and it shouldn't be ours. And I think we all know where this is going to go when the next bond payment comes due, we're going to be at loggerheads, we're going to be right back where we were before. And if memory serves me right, was it 2006 you said, Mike, that this project was approved, the SRI? Okay, so 10 years, Leoni has been making that payment, correct? Okay, and I guess if I can finish up a couple of quick, short ones, who owns the interceptor? Do we own, actually own the interceptor or not?
Technically, technically, yes, since there's debt still on it.
Okay, so if Leoni has defaulted, do we have the right to then do what we want with the interceptor? Because I, I, no.
No, no, the, the bond contract doesn't say that, that we're allowed to do that. It gives us remedies for collecting the payment only, not assuming control and authority.
Okay, and you had mentioned the, the regional EG issues with drawing people in, and I, I think there had been a proposal out there some time ago for many, if not all, the township serviced by this Leoni sewer to purchase the system, relieve Leoni of all the financial obligations and run it as a group instead of butting heads, which seemed to make sense to me. So those are my comments for now, thank you.
Thank you. Carl, and then Phil, then Carl.
This would be a question for Administrator Overton. Do you see any value into calling the sites together one final time? So we know we've covered all of our, every attempt to resolve this before we go further. Would there be any value in one more negotiation session with you and the Drain Commissioner attempting to resolve the issue as the negotiators in the middle? Any value there at all?
I hate to appear jaded, but I don't see it. We have spent hours and hours and hours discussing this, and they all have their position, and they all argue elements of the contract, and at the end of the day, the only thing they all really agree to is that the contract says the county has to make the call.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, but I'm only going to give a couple. I've said this before, and I will, I certainly will, I certainly hope, and I hope, and I certainly do respect my fellow county commissioners, I certainly hope that our decisions, or our decision is made on information and facts and not for political reasons. Secondarily, that, let's keep in mind that when the contract says that Leoni is obligated to pay the debt, if you look at the contract, and let's also go with the judge's ruling too, which I know some people don't really care too much about the judge's ruling, but I do. And if you look at the contract and you look at the ruling, yes, Leoni pays the debt, but it's no different than a general contractor handling, handling the money that comes to them to pay for the contract that they have. In this matter, in this case, and the judge's ruling is very clear on this, if you've read it, and I think the administrator will agree that, yes, Leoni's supposed to pay it, but they're also supposed to pay it after receiving the dollars from those other three townships. To me, that's very clear, the judge made that very clear. Matter of fact, the judge said, if that doesn't occur, his words were, we'll see you back in court. Which we all know that, this is all going to end up back in court, we all know that, we're, you know, we're all smart people here. But I do also feel that the judge did a disservice. The judge should have handled this, he should have completely done his job and made a decision, but he put the onus on the county to make a decision when it comes to four other townships. Unfortunately, however you want to look at it, he could have taken care of it, but he didn't. So he put it on us, because we all know, we've been told, I know I've been told for years, stay out of it, county's not involved. Well, of course, the judge made us involved. So I really think, I really think we need to keep in mind that, yes, Leoni is responsible to make the payment, but after receiving funds. Now, we could talk about, well, Leoni, Leoni's been making all these payments for years and years and years. That's, I agree with you, that was a mistake on Leoni's part, total mistake. They shouldn't have made the payments from day one, but unfortunately, because of some of the players involved in this from back then, they did not do anybody a service. And I will, I will not name names, but we all know who I'm talking about. And I guess, at this point, my last comment would be that, okay, what Supervisor Britton did, and I realize, he is the supervisor of Leoni, what he did in his comments to our administrator was done by his own, it was his own decision to do that. He had no, he had no comments from any of his other six board members. And I have gone on record to completely disagree with Supervisor Britton. So, so I realize again, he's the supervisor, but the fact is that his comments on this were not the same view of the six other board members of Leoni Township, and obviously, it was not the view of their council. Their council felt very strongly about this, about these, shall we call it, I think there were 17 requests of the township, and the council recommended strongly that some of these were either similar in nature or just were not appropriate to the situation, and were not specifically appropriate to what the judge had asked. And so however you want to look at that, you know, we got to keep in mind, we are constantly told or asked, well, you may not like this, but I think we should follow what our council tells us. We as county commissioners get that all the time. Well, Leoni Township was told by its council, this is what you should do. Now, as far as you not getting anything back from them, well, you should have. So, yeah. My understanding is Clerk Mankey, because if you don't get anything, it's going to come from the clerk. My understanding is Clerk Mankey is supposed to be sending specific details of what they're looking for. I'm not quite sure why you don't have it yet, but you're supposed to have that, from my understanding. And I will, I'll stop right there. I'll thank you for your indulgence.
Anyone else? Questions, concerns? Commissioner Duckham?
Just a statement, and I know we're here to resolve, trying to find out how to get this bond paid, but if I put my business cap on and run a parallel scenario, if, if I have a customer call and wants trash service, I quote a price and put a dumpster in place. I own the dumpster, my price, the cost of owning that dumpster is borne by my company, and it's part of doing business, and my price of that dumpster is billed into the service fee that I charge a customer. So I can see where, years ago, if Leoni wanted to branch out and treat more sewage, that they would put a pipeline in place on their dime, and everybody, they kind of had monopoly, everybody had to sign up and use this pipeline, and the cost of that pipeline should have been borne by Leoni Township as the proprietor of this service, just as the cost of my trash dumpster be borne by my trash hauling company to provide a customer the service. So maybe it's different, I don't know, but I put my business hat on, I would think that Leoni owns the system, and they make the payment on the system, just the same as I make a payment on a dumpster to put into a business or a residential unit. Thank you.
Commissioner Elbow?
I was writing down as comparable, but I, after hearing Phil, I thought I'd just speak it. I think in layman terms, it's even easier for us anyway, because what I think we need to deal with is, the payment needs to be made. And it would be the same as if I bought a house and financed it through City Mortgage, I've owned it five years, and I decide I'm going to sell it on a land contract, somebody moves in, makes payments to me, and at some point in time, they quit making payments, who do you think City Mortgage is going to come after? They're not going to come after the person that's making the land contract payment, they're going to come after me because the mortgage is in my name.
Anyone else?
Just, just for clarification here, when this all went down, all four townships were part of this contract. It wasn't just that Leoni was a part of this contract, all four townships were a part of this contract. So if you want to say, if you want to say, well, I own the house, well, the fact is, all four townships were agreeable to this contract, okay? So, and again, the contract could certainly have been more clear, no doubt about it, but it does allude to the fact that, again, okay, the SRI pipeline was put in, but let's also understand, it was put in, it was put in because these three townships wanted it, okay? Leoni was part of the original deal and contract, but these three townships wanted that pipeline. So you're, you're telling me if I want some, so if, if three people want a particular township to hypothetically build them a house, those three people, those three people aren't supposed to be responsible for it whatsoever? And again, let's go back to the judge's ruling, he was very clear, those three townships are responsible for paying Leoni, then Leoni pays the county. That's not an if, that's a fact, that's a ruling from the judge. It's a ruling from the judge. Now, I just want, I want some commissioners to disagree with me, that the judge did not say, those three townships pay Leoni, and Leoni pays the county. That was his ruling. Now, so we want to disagree with the judge, correct? I'm just throwing it out there.
I, I think it was an opinion the judge gave, it was not an order, if it was an order, we'd be doing what he ordered us to do. And Carl, I think that back in the beginning, I don't think many people would disagree that they based doing the SRI on bad numbers. They planned on more expansion to pay for the system, and it didn't happen. But again, it goes back to, how far are we going to dive down into deciding who we think should pay? We know who should pay us. The question is, and the, one of the reasons for maybe wanting an audit is, does Leoni have the money to pay us? I, I mean, it almost seems like Leoni wants us to go after the other three to get their money, that's their obligation, I think. I think we should insist on the payment from Leoni. I think we should insist on the payment from Leonie, and let them figure out how to get it back. They can go back to court, and if the judge's ruling was that clear, or opinion was, they can get an order for it. But I don't think we should be dragged into making a decision on which of these townships should pay how much. Leonie is to make the payment to us, how they get it is up to them. They've made it for the last ten years, and I think they could continue to make it if they wanted to. Thank you.
You have a new entry into the fray?
I've been involved in this since I first came on the board, in the different sewer projects. I have a township now that is directly involved. Their growth projection for the length of the bond was one new customer a year. Horton's growth projection was one new customer a year. I don't know, Bob, what did Columbia originally project per year for new customers? You didn't have a high number, it wasn't absorbentently high, we were figuring on just the recapitalization through Leonie Township. There's not a weight for new customers, there's not, it wasn't built with the thought process of new customers, it was built with the thought process that the people who are on it are going to have paid for it, and that Leonie was going to manage the money and take care of the capitalization. I've been here through the whole thing, and the original intent was Leonie was going to capitalize the fingers coming out of the plant, and they were going to go to the lake communities and get their customers. And the DNR recommended against it to Leonie, and Leonie said, "No, we're going to do it that way." And that's why we have a spider web sewer system out there, instead of a managed growth system. We went to where the customers were. Well, you got to run pipe to get to the customers, and Leonie said, "Well, we'll pay for the pipe." That was the plan, up until the change in Leonie's political situation.
Anyone else? At this time, I expect no action. I will be bringing forth a resolution with a recommendation, and the board will vote it up or down, I suppose. And we'll go from there.
And thank you for allowing us to come and speak to you today about this important topic. I'm going to kind of touch the key points in my staff report that would go to the Human Services Committee and the full board, and then I'll ask whenever health educators come up and give you a more in-depth presentation. We have been working on, I guess, what I would describe as more tobacco prevention and control programming funding for twenty years. When Attorney General Frank Kelly sued the tobacco industry back in 1997, 1998, Michigan's been receiving an allocation of those funds ever since. And what we're really asking the state to consider doing, and hoping that you'll support our request for the resolution, is give us just ten percent of these funds to help support prevention and control across the state. It's $250 million that will come to the state in the 1516 budget, so this is kind of an ask for that consideration. And as we know, the state is already working hard and developing the 1516 budget as we speak. So the timing is important, if we want to have our voice heard in Lansing, to consider sending the message that we'd really like to have more of these funds provided for this purpose. The current situation, which I'm sure you're probably aware of in one way or another, is that tobacco and cigarette consumption is the number-one preventable cause in the country, in the state, and in our county. It costs us millions of dollars a year, and it's one of the key health behaviors, if you will, that we would like to change and do more about. Just looking at some of the smoking rates within the county, the city of Jackson has an overall smoking rate of thirty-five percent. It's about eighteen percent statewide, so you can see how different we are there. There are even age groups within the city of Jackson that are up in the forty-six percent smoking range. So, we shouldn't kind of believe for any second that we have tackled and solved this problem on a community-level basis here in Jackson County. Michigan's really fallen really far behind in allocating resources for this purpose. In 2014, we're only going to spend one and a half million dollars of state funds for this program, and the CDC recommendation is probably about a hundred and twenty million. So we're very far behind where we should be. Tobacco is killing seventeen thousand people a year in the state, more than alcohol, auto accidents, drug overdoses, murders, and suicides combined. Fifteen thousand of these deaths are people who became addicted to tobacco, nearly all of them when they started smoking at age twenty. So we do have to continue to get upstream, and we do have to continue to educate particularly children in school districts, and also the younger population in the community. And we think that these resources would help us do that, really that's what we're asking about. Two thousand of these deaths are probably incurred in non-smokers who die as a result of secondhand smoke exposure, not so much in the workplace anymore necessarily, because we have a smoke-free air law in the state, but a lot of people continue to be exposed to secondhand smoke in their own home environment, so that's a problem as well. Tobacco use costs the state more than $7.4 billion in healthcare and lost productivity. That's the kind of number that we're looking at. Strategically, I feel, and many of our health-oriented, health improvement-oriented organizations in Jackson County feel that the resolution that we brought forth today for you to consider really supports both the healthy communities and the education goals of our strategic plan in the county. I think you can see their support expressed to you for moving this forward in the fifteen letters of support that we included in your packet of information today. Like I said before, we're only asking for about ten percent of these funds to be allocated. None of them have been used directly for prevention and control in nearly the twenty years that the state's been receiving these funds. And Rhonda Rudolph will give you more information on what exactly they've been used for. From the policy-legal perspective, assuming that these funds would be distributed by the Department of Community Health at the state level, they would make the decisions in conjunction with whatever guidance and direction they receive from the legislature on what they would be used for, how they'd be allocated, and what we could use them for at the local level. So it's not our decision, and we're comfortable with that. We haven't identified any legal issues or barriers that are associated with an increased allocation of funds for this purpose. Timing-wise, like I indicated just a minute ago, the state leadership is developing the 1516 budget, so we'd like to have our voice heard in time for that to happen. And we also would plan, if we're successful with this resolution, to communicate this to all the other health departments in the state of Michigan, and ask them to also ask for these kinds of resolutions to be supported by their county commissions as well. So we may be taking a strong leadership role here at the local county level, but it's for a very good reason, a very good purpose. On the service-level impact side, we think that a likely use of the increased funding would be for state and local counter-advertising efforts through the media, and increased tobacco dependence treatment for Michigan residents. It could also be used to fund the local tobacco control programming effort to cover all of Michigan's eighty-three counties, because it currently doesn't, and includes working with local agencies to reduce and eliminate tobacco-related disparities. The alternative to not doing anything on this issue is that what we're going to be doing is maintaining the status quo. And we need to take action, this is a call to action, and I'm encouraging all of you to consider supporting this effort as we move forward with our overall health improvement efforts in the community, and also to control healthcare costs. So, with that, I'll ask Rhonda Rudolph to come up, she's a health educator in the health department, and she serves as the chair of our Jackson County Tobacco Reduction Coalition, and the Smoke-Free Health Action Team of the Health Improvement Organization here in the community. And then we'll take your questions. Thank you.
As Richard mentioned, we are going to present some information on, okay, why isn't, I mean, where am I supposed to point this? Okay. Use this thing? I'll use this thing. Oh, I need to turn it on, that would help. As Richard mentioned, we are asking you to support this resolution, advocating a portion of the 1998 Master Settlement Agreement, annual payments be directed towards a statewide annual comprehensive tobacco prevention and control program in Michigan. As Richard also mentioned, these are some of the different, oh, well, tobacco kills more than all of these different areas combined, I'm not going to review those, and it also reduces the life expectancy by an average of more than fourteen years, by way of lung cancer, heart disease, and other illnesses. And this is according to the Centers for Disease Control. Now, we know that tobacco is a risk factor for chronic disease, and it's a known or probable cause of more than twenty-five specific diseases, and it's an important cause of chronic disease in general. In 2007, thirty-nine percent of the working-age population, which would be all of us, reported at least one chronic health condition. And integration of tobacco dependence treatment into chronic disease programs is recognized as a CDC best practice, which we are really trying to incorporate into pretty much all of the current health practices that we do. Now, people with serious mental illness die at least twenty-five years younger than the general population, and largely, this is due to conditions that are worsened due to chronic, or due to smoking. In a report that Richard compiled on the burden of mental disease or mental illness in the county of Jackson, approximately one in four adults in Jackson are burdened by some form of mental illness. So you're looking at like twenty-five percent of the population. There is a high personal and societal cost, we know that it is the number-one preventable cause of disease or death in the U.S., and one in five deaths are attributable to tobacco, that's twenty percent of the deaths. Four hundred and eighty thousand deaths are attributable to smoking annually in the U.S. This is according to the U.S. Surgeon General Report in 2014, and there's an enormous cost factor, $280 billion, and this is as a result of direct medical cost, indirect cost due to lost productivity and earnings, Medicaid cost, and Medicare cost. Michigan's personal costs range from $14,500 to $14,800 Michigan residents dying prematurely due to their own smoking, and I know, Richard, you used the seventeen thousand, there's actually a range, and I used the lowest number, Richard used the highest number. Now, tobacco use in Michigan, heart disease, cancer, stroke, and COPD are the four leading causes of death as a result of smoking, and tobacco use, again, in Michigan is the leading preventable cause of death, with secondhand smoke being the third-leading preventable cause of death. In Jackson County, in the 2011 Community Health Assessment, it showed that approximately thirty-five percent of residents in the city of Jackson reported smoking compared to twenty-two percent of the county residents. So we know that within the city, we've got a high concentration of smokers. Among the residents who do smoke within the county of Jackson, fifty-one percent reported stopping for one day or longer. So we know they smoke, but they want to quit. The resources are lacking to help them quit. And approximately thirty-nine percent of the women who delivered babies at Allegiance Health during the three months prior to pregnancy smoked. According to the 2012 MCH vital records, twenty-point-two percent of pregnant moms in Michigan smoked, while thirty-point-four percent of Jackson County moms smoked during pregnancy. High rate of smokers among pregnant women in Jackson County. And in just-in-time report from the WIC clinic, this is a report that's run the actual day of the program, the day she ran this, which was right at the end of September, thirty-five percent of the current pregnant moms enrolled in WIC smoked. She ran a report for me yesterday, and it was thirty-two percent, but it's always in that thirty to thirty-five range, so we've got a high range of pregnant women in Jackson County that smoke. This is the four leading causes of death in Jackson County, which is pretty, is ranking the same as the state. You've got heart disease, now, if you notice the green line, that's Jackson. Heart disease is below the state line, which is a good thing. Cancer rate is higher than the state line, so our cancer rates are above the state line, that's not good. If you look at COPD, which includes things like asthma, lung, bronchitis, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, yeah, those types of things, there's a whole range of different things that are lumped in that COPD category, very high, but it's all over the board, but it's consistently above the state average. And then you look at the stroke rate, it takes a lot of dips, and it looks like it's below, but if you look at that really close, you can start to see there's an upward spiral again. So, some of this is due to better care, and with the influx of the new health insurance, we're hoping to see a lot of these changing, but still, with the insurance changes, with the formularies, a lot of those are not consistent either, so it'll be interesting to see how that changes in the long run. What is tobacco costing us? $1.1 billion, and this is in the state of Michigan alone, this is the most current rates we're seeing. And this is, again, due to the medical cost, the indirect cost from lost productivity, Medicaid, and Medicare. Secondhand smoke deaths, fifty thousand average in the U.S. alone, and in Michigan, fifteen hundred and twenty-four hundred from secondhand smoke. And, you know, you can't deny the number of studies that have been done that show the effects of secondhand smoke. I mean, it just can't be denied. I mean, boxes and boxes and boxes of studies have been done. Bottom line, we are not putting enough resources into solving this problem. So what are we doing with this funding in Michigan? Richard alluded to this. Well, how do we compare with other states, first of all? Okay, so the blue is really good. North Dakota's the only state that is actually putting their Master Settlement dollars where they actually should be put. All the other orange states are putting under fifty percent. And you can see that the majority of states are not putting fifty percent, we're putting big goose egg, as Richard mentioned. This is where it's currently going. Five hundred and ninety-three million is going toward a bond securitization payment. What happened was, Richard, remind me, in 2005 and in 2007, we basically borrowed against the payments we were getting to, one of them was, in 2007, we borrowed against it to pay off some of our, to balance the budget, and in 2004, we did something else with it, I can't remember. But, so we have to pay off those payments. We're using it for Medicaid at the MCH area, Twenty-First Century Job Funds, Family Independence Program, Aging Respite Care at DCH, Student Financial Services. The tobacco tax enforcement is the closest thing we have for tobacco prevention, and in administration at the Attorney General's office. But none of that is coming back into our local area to help fight the problem in our area. How does our prevention and control efforts in Michigan compare? The American Lung Association does a rating system every year, and they give grades based on how we do in certain areas. Now, in tobacco prevention and control spending, big F, we flunked, because we do not put any money from either the Master Settlement dollars, and we don't put near the amount of money, the recommended amount, which is $121 million, into the programs. Smoke-free air laws, we've got to be, we have a great smoke-free air law, but we still have preemption. Cessation, we got an F, because there's so many different formularies that different people use. Cigarette excise tax, we got a C, because we do have two dollars, but they don't cover the other tobacco products, and they don't cover the electronic cigarettes, which, as you know, are a big, big item now. And the electronic cigarette industry is owned by the tobacco industry, in case you weren't aware of that. They are, that's their big promotion area right now. So the recommendations are to invest in comprehensive tobacco control programs by preventing initiation among youth and young adults, promote quitting among adults and youth, eliminate exposure to secondhand smoke, and to identify and eliminate tobacco-related disparities. Some of those disparities would be the pregnant women I mentioned earlier, the mental health population, and also the underinsured. And I think you guys got a green fact sheet that we sent that lists some of those disparate populations that I didn't go over. populations that I didn't go over. So your support will encourage other counties to consider passing this ordinance or this resolution. It'll influence the budget. It'll help align those dollars with their original intended purpose, because this is what was laid out in the actual agreement itself, and it'll make up to 10% of the dollars available for prevention and control, and it will definitely help to reduce the massive healthcare costs associated with tobacco use. And this is where the funds would be used if the state got them. Increased funding would allow the tobacco control program from the master settlement agreement would fund state and local paid media to increase awareness of programs available for quitting, counter-advertising, and other areas. It would increase tobacco dependence treatments for Michigan residents, and it would also increase tobacco funding for tobacco program overall and follow it down to local tobacco coalitions such as ours. So again, I'm pleading for your support for our resolution. And this is some support we've gotten locally. We've gotten 15 letters of support, so we have large support in the community for this resolution. Thank you. And I would just like to add that our county would be the very first county to pass such a resolution, and in light of the fact that our smoking rates are higher than the state of Michigan, it would be phenomenal if we could get this resolution passed to show your support for getting those dollars back into our local community. Do you guys have any questions?
Mike, well, just a comment, not a question. That tobacco settlement money, I hesitated to say it, but I think a big portion of that was used for the bankruptcy of Detroit. They took 17 and 1/2 million over 20 years to contribute to that. I'm not sure how that's related to tobacco, but it would seem to make sense that this would be a more appropriate use of it.
Thank you. Oh, did you?
Yeah, I appreciated your presentation. That was the one question I had, is where is the money currently going? If we're asking for 10% to be taken away from existing funding, what are we taking it away from? But you did a nice job in that portion of your presentation, and also, your variety of letters of support are significant. I guess one question I might have for Richard, though, would be, what is the plan? Do you tend to, are you inclined to champion this through the state, Richard? Do you have an organization you belong with that is moving forward with this initiative? As you mentioned, we would be the first.
I certainly intend to champion it. We here in Jackson County are members of the Michigan Association for Local Public Health. That's all but one health department in the state of Michigan are members of that association, and all the health officers are part of that as well. And I would be communicating out to them and encouraging them to consider doing this similar thing in their community.
Thank you.
I don't consider it government's place to regulate people's behavior. And as far as a tobacco money settlement, it's my, can you say extortion? The government forced businesses to give to this. I don't like the whole process. Thank you.
If not, we'll move on. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Arts Recreation and Cultural Opportunities Strategic Goal Presentation. I believe that's you, Grant, and Scott, you're part of that too, right? Thank you.
It's all the word "budget" up there first.
Relax.
Well, yeah, they can stay up there. I wish I had more to report. I don't have much to report right now, because we're still working on downloading the data from our system right now. We're working in two financial systems, IFIS and BSNA, and we hope, actually, we've got reports today that I can start working with to see the bottom line. But that's just in the general fund. We're working on getting reports in the other fund. So we have an intern that'll be working on that Monday, plugging in numbers, and hopefully we'll start giving you weekly updates where we are with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for giving Grant and I an opportunity to give you an update on our Arts Recreation and Culture strand for the 2020 Plan. I think when you see this presentation, you'll see that we've made a lot of advancement and movement forward, even obviously prior to myself coming here back in January, but also moving forward with the Recreation Work Group, but also to our challenge. We have some challenges that we'll be overcoming, and there are obstacles, but there are a lot of opportunities in those. Prior to myself coming here, when the strand was created, they wanted to create a vision statement, and that vision statement was such that would give them some boundaries and parameters and some guidance to work off of. And Jackson County's wealth of cultural opportunities, recreational activities, community amenities, and the one I like, neighborly environment, makes it one of Michigan's most desirable places to live, work, and play. So that's the, our vision statement for our strand. However, if you look and take a look at this slide, there's a lot of stuff that's going on within the county. Musicals, plays, the orchestra, the fair, which we're getting ready to do a master plan on, the Cascades, and then just the amount of green space and open space and lakes that we have throughout the county for activities and recreation. However, there seems to be this underlying theme and feeling that there really is nothing to do in Jackson. And I can tell you right now, as a new resident, that is completely incorrect, is completely incorrect. Being one of the first ones to do a testimonial in Experience Jackson, I cannot tell you how much there is to do. Adam and I and a few others met the other day and started preparing for the community video that's going to be produced, and started to outlay a lot of stuff that's going on within the community and the city and the townships. And I think, Adam, when we looked at it, I don't think there was a day within the week or evening or anytime that you couldn't do something that would engage you and involve you in with the community. So I find that fascinating. But there are a lot of things. We have plentiful parkland. The county has close to 1,000 acres and 16 parks. The city has 27, over 600 acres. We also have an opportunity to really be part of the, I guess, the heart of Michigan's trail system. When you look at the Lake to Lake Trail System, the Falling Waters Trail, 10 and 1/2 miles of paved all-purpose trail, that they've come to us to be part of, that negotiating opportunity to connect Lake Huron and Lake Michigan, which will be 260-some miles of trail at one point in time that is connected. Then there's a lot of special events that we have in institutions, the Cascades, Ellis Sharp, the Hearst Planetarium, Cell Block 7, also Art 364, and then the special events that we hold on an annual basis, the Shakespeare Festival, the Falling, excuse me, the Civil War muster Halbazar, the Balloon Festival, and a multitude of other things that we have to want to engage our community, to be part of it, and get a sense of what we call the neighborly environment that we have and be part of that. And I think I'll turn this over to Grant as we move forward.
Thank you. So we've divided up into four work groups in order to move the strand forward. The Art and Artist Work Group has been championed by the Arts and Cultural Alliance from the beginning, and its charge is to increase awareness and alignment and access to art and artists in the Jackson community. The Parks and Recreation and Trails Work Group, the Jackson County Parks and the Doleum Center began championing this work group in the spring of this year, and its charge is to increase awareness, alignment, and access to parks, recreation, and trails. Then we have the Events and Institutions Work Group, which, again, has been championed by the Arts and Cultural Alliance of Jackson, and its charge is to increase awareness, alignment, and access to events and institutions within our community. And then finally, we have the Community Engagement Work Group, which Experience Jackson championed through the summer of 2014, and its charge is to increase overall awareness, access, and alignment of arts, recreation, and culture throughout Jackson County. In the time that we've been meeting, there have been various challenges that we've needed to overcome. The strand and its work group have found that it's difficult to keep a sustained group of dedicated volunteers active over time. The collective impact model is based on volunteers, so there's been a lack of staff and financial resources to move the strand forward. And finally, leadership has often been so involved in other activities that sufficient time has not been spent to facilitate the strand. However, steps have been taken over the last year to address many of those issues. The strand has been championed by a board member of the Arts and Cultural Alliance, and now the directors of the Doleum Center and Jackson County Parks have recently joined Alliance Board, the Alliance Board members as co-champions. We've also had the addition of support staff. We've known that the health and education strands of Jackson 2020 have done phenomenal things, and the reason that they've been able to do that is because they've had support staff that have allowed their various action teams to move forward. Consequently, the alliance has sought and received a sponsorship from Experience Jackson to hire a part-time strand manager in the spring of 2014. A small amount of funding was also received from the Jackson Community Foundation to fund that staff person. A similar sponsorship is currently being considered by Experience Jackson for the whole 2015 calendar period, and we're hopeful for getting that. Now I would like to talk about some of the things that the work groups have been doing. The strand came to realize that the Community Engagement Work Group and the Events and Institutions Work Group were paralleling each other, and consequently, the two work groups are in the process of aligning into a single entity. Activities that the two work groups have engaged in so far is, over the summer, they surveyed, they conducted surveys concerning the usage of the Experience Jackson Community calendar. They went and tried to, several times, do that through an online presence and didn't get very many activities. They actually started going to the Cruisans downtown during the summer, just using a blackboard or a whiteboard that they brought out in front of the kiosk that they always have, and they got a lot more responses. So the answer for, although there's a lot of excitement over online surveys, smartphone applications and things like that, sometimes good old-fashioned surveys do the work just as well. The second thing that they have, are looking at is the creation of an events festivals committee that would develop a three-year strategic plan to promote a collaborative and coordinated calendar of community events. This would be modeled after something that's been done in the Traverse City region for over 10 years, where they found a need for better communication between hotels and events taking place in the Traverse City area, and so they began a group for better communication, and that included hotels, restaurants, events organizers, organizers, and really, anyone whose business is involved in serving tourists. Many festivals, event organizers, and stakeholders participate in that group to learn best practices from each other, but more importantly, to inform everyone in the industry about what they're up to, which helps to reduce burnout, and most importantly, ensures that hotels, cafes, and other establishments that serve tourists as well as residents of the community, that they are ready for that influx of tourists and are able to tell them what's going on. All new event organizers that approach this group are mentored and guided by more established events organizers, and the groups help to, help new events to pick days which are not full of events. And also, if they join this group, they are free to bring any event flyers that they have, and the organizer of that events group will scan it along with all of the others and send it all to the participants in a PDF, so that everybody knows that everything is going on and that what is happening in Jackson doesn't happen in Traverse City, where a person comes to one of our local hotels and they ask the person at the desk what's going on in Jackson, and that person, normally being a younger person, automatically says there's nothing to do in Jackson, although I think we've illustrated that there is tons to do in Jackson. Then, on the Art and Artist Work Group, we have been invigorating ourselves by partnering with U of M's School of Information students to raise awareness of the great collection of public art that is found throughout Jackson. We started with the idea that the students would help us have some type of tool that would help us to crowdsource information on what Jackson residents corporately have identified as being our most important arts and cultural artifacts within the community. We weren't able to find somebody that, an institution that would be able to host and maintain and update that application. So the students went to Plan B, which is a game of eight cards that will be hosted on the Arts and Cultural Alliance website that gives clues which kids and their interested adults, and hopefully, adults on their, curious adults on their own, will be able to use for those clues to go out and identify what those eight art and cultural facilities are within Jackson, and they will be providing training to the Art and Artist Work Group and the Arts and Cultural Alliance, so that we can create new cards in the future and be able to add on to that. But the neat hook for getting the kids involved in this is that after finding those things, there will be on a small sign or something next to each one of those, there'll be one of those computer QR codes that they'll be able to scan with their smartphone, or if they don't have that, they can take down the number and you can add that into a website. They can submit that via the website, and after they have identified all eight of those initially, and then the new ones that we do, they can submit to the Arts and Cultural Alliance, and the Arts and Cultural Alliance will provide a certificate to the child or whoever that they've completed this. And we all know that kids like to, you know, earn badges and stickers and things like that. So we think that'll be a great way to get kids and their families involved in finding out about all of the neat things that there are in Jackson. The work group is also promoting the Cascades Project as the big idea to the Jackson 2020 Steering Committee, and between us and the work that Adam has done, we feel that that is something that might happen and help to move the master plan for a component of the Sparks Foundation County Park for the Cascades to be able to move forward and have that vision come to fruition, not that I'm trying to rhyme or anything here. And then other activities that work group leadership has been involved in.
be an emphasis of that, and the leadership of that, myself and Rod Malloy from the Doleum Center, have focused along with Grant Baumann on the second edition of our city, of Jackson and Jackson County, second edition for the Joint Recreation Plan. We're moving very swiftly with that. I just got three more chapters from Grant last night that I'll have to review over the weekend, and obviously our committee, Commissioner Plachek, is one of the individuals that are involved with it, and we'll be looking to submit that on the 1st of February of next year, which gives us enough time to be able to submit grants to DNR prior to the 1st of April. So we're looking forward to that. And one of the things involving environment, we tried something with the Halbazar Color Run. We were out collecting water bottles instead of just putting them in the trash can, letting them go to the landfill, when we had a great response from that, from the runners and the public, and went over well. And lastly, we've been working very diligently on doing and redoing the map that is part of the city and part of the county for the non-motorized trail map for the county, being able to create loop systems within the city, and also loop opportunities throughout the county and throughout the parks that we have. So things are moving forward with that workgroup. And lastly, thank you very much for your time and attention. We appreciate it. Questions?
I have one.
Sure.
When the campaign, when I was in the middle of the campaign season, I was approached by different members of the community wanting to know how the Arts and Cultural long-term plan to fund its, fund itself, and was kind of challenged with approaching outside organizations or other community institutions with, with long-term funding, similar to the EG model. Have you explored that at all, or is that anything that's been on topic with, with you?
No, we really haven't explored that, but that is a good idea that we will look into in the near future. We have been successful in securing some local funding for, to hire a part-time Strand Backbone Leader, as it's called in the Collaborative Impact Model, and we would like to move forward for a, a more sustainable outcome. The Arts and Cultural Alliance did go through a strategic planning process this summer, and we hope to, within a few years, be able to hire, have the resources to be able to hire an Executive Director. The Arts and Cultural Alliance is really serving as the backbone of the Arts Recreation and Culture Strand. I think the stronger that the Alliance gets, the more support that they'll be able to provide to the Art Strand, just like Legions Hospital and Legions Health and its Health Information, Health Information Organization, or HIO, has been able to help fund the, the Health Strand, and the school districts and the intermediate school district have been able to help fund the activities of the Education Strand. So in the long term, we hope to be able to do that. There's really just not the, the infrastructure there to take, to take advantage of that yet, but we're, but we're building towards that. One of the neat things that I just wanted to point out about the, the trail map that Scott concluded with, is that is one of the first times that I'm aware of where a workgroup from Arts Recreation and Culture started working with an action team from the Health Strand who was interested in trails from, you know, in order to promote a, a more active lifestyle. So there's starting to be collaboration across the strands, rather than just within the strands, because one of the things that we don't want to do is just, right now, all of these different organizations work within themselves, and they really built up silos, and we, we don't want to just build bigger silos. We want to build, you know, connections between those, so that there's true collaboration among all of the different things. All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to, you know, publicly acknowledge the work that Grant and Scott have done. This was one strand that was kind of fledging from the board's strategic plan, and since they've been involved over the past year, they've really taken it to a new level and getting some things done that's on your strategic plan.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you. Next up, we have other items. Does anyone have any other items? Sir?
I'd like to challenge the board right now with what direction you'd like the administration to go. Do we want a resolution to go to the board in November on the SRI, Leoni Sewer Project, and have him have the power to take action on December 2nd, or do we want to wait until the December board meeting for us to take action?
Just timelines. When is the payment due to us from Leoni in December? I see. And then it's due by us when? I see.
I realize there'll be objections and difference of opinion to it, but I think it would be best if we, as a, as a body, would let the community know where we stand in advance, so that way everybody knows what's going on.
Would we be bringing it just to the board, or is there wisdom in running it through committees or not?
I, personally, it's going to be a resolution. It's pretty straightforward. It's a board decision. I don't want to necessarily, see, if I put it through a committee, it kind of puts those individual commissioners on the spot, and I'd rather have the whole board take it up. Yes. Me on the spot. Sir?
I would think I would like to see it in November, so everybody knows what's in the, in the cards for December 1st. It's went on and on. It probably should be brought to a head, and it's a difficult vote for a lot of people, but we have to resolve it.
Excuse me. I, I have no problem with November. With respect to our chairman, I, I think, except for myself, at least at this study session, I haven't heard any other real objections except for some of my comments, but just to clarify with Commissioner Elwell, and everybody knows that here, and I know this is not going to change things, but Leoni Township did go to court with those three, with those other three townships, for the very purpose that you're talking about, to get the judge to actually make a decision. That was the purpose. And let's face it, the judge dumped it on the county. So you're correct, that's going to have to be the process, and we all know that's what's going to happen. An appeal has already been made, so Leoni will go back to court with those three townships, and then hopefully, the judge won't say that that's the county's responsibility. Hopefully the judge will actually make a decision. So I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Seen, hearing, no more. My intent is to bring a resolution, what, not next Tuesday, but the following Tuesday. Thank you. Public comments, last opportunity, sir. Please approach podium, state your name.
Bob Elrod, Columbia Township. My first comment is, your meetings are running so long, and I get chided from some of your commissioners that, why can't the Columbia Township meetings be as short as the commissioners? But you guys broke that bubble. Let me just quick, a quick comment on the lawsuits, and I can't say too much because we're still in litigation, but Monday, we should finish up with the court testifying on the, across our countersuit. And the judge has already said that both sides will have to have written closing arguments like they did on the, in the first two, first two parts of the lawsuit. Thirdly, I would like to make some of you aware, if not all of you might know already, that we continue at Columbia and Liberty and Hanover to find problems with the system that was built by the county, engineered by an engineer hired by the county, inspected by an inspector hired by the county, constructed by a contractor hired by the county, and we continue to find things. Over the last two years, we've spent upwards of $200,000 for line freeze-offs that in some cases were 18 inches below a road. Our people are being strapped with those types of expenses, and like I said, we're at, we're at the end of our rope. As we find the main line, the SRI, is so shallow that the contractor couldn't put air release valves in the manholes, because the air release valve would be higher than the, than the cover on the manhole. And in some cases, they put it in at a 45 degree, and that doesn't work. They've broken off and caused the lines to, to plug. So like I say, I would like you all to know that Liberty, Hanover, and Columbia are getting close to the end of our rope. Our customers, our residents should not have to pay for something that was given to us in such poor workmanship. And I thank you for this opportunity.
Any additional public comment? Seen, hearing, none? Moving on. Commissioner comment? Sir?
We can be chatted about how long we want today, but we've got a lot done, and we're still an hour under most Columbia meetings.
Whoops, I'm sorry. Any other comment?
And we haven't had any verbal or near physical assaults either.
Seen, hearing, none?